I'd like to call to order the city council regular meeting for April seventh. The order, please. Could I have a roll call?
Mayor Delaney?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Thompson?
Here.
Councilmember Swanson?
Here.
And councilmember Colback?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Let's all rise for our pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Approval of the agenda. Is there any additions, changes, or deletions to our agenda? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and motion carries. Consent agenda. The consent agenda contains the following items for approval. The March seventeenth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting minutes and the payment of claims and listing of bills. I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and motion carries. Community concerns. Do we have anyone signed in for community concerns, Deb?
We do not.
Okay, alright, we'll go pass that then. Right to our public hearing, and we have a public hearing to vacate the east and west alley located between blocks one and two of the Crawford's addition, and this is recommended by water and wastewater department. And this would commonly be the alleyway, the driveway there south of the Eighth Avenue diner and the property owned by Dave Boucher and Michael Crawford. And this was originally platted as a public right-of-way, but is only used as a private driveway. And so it makes sense to vacate this area. So I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing for this vacate possibility.
Go move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and motion carries. So our public meeting is now open. If there's anyone here that would like to comment on this proposed vacate. And I don't have anyone here in the audience. Any questions from the council? And really, we're just trying to clean up the area just for comments here. This is a gravelled area that is... Would Eighth Avenue Diner be part of this vacate then? Or is this all south of there?
They do own, they own part of it, the front right there.
Okay.
Yeah, they are.
Will this affect any maintenance? We won't have to maintain that alleyway any longer. Or did we?
Dave Boucher and Michael Crawford all took care of it.
Okay.
Because that's what they use.
Okay.
It's their access.
So really, no effect to the city by vacating this. It just makes sense to clean this up and get this to the proper property owner. It's an area that we don't need as a city, so, okay. Seeing no other comments or questions, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye. All opposed, say no, and motion carries. So we'll make a determination on that at a later date then, correct?
Yes.
Okay, alright. Next up is reports, and we can scratch alley and public works. And we'll move right ahead to water wastewater. So Joel, if you want to come up to the podium?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
You guys should have all received my report. I guess, is there any questions, comments, concerns of the sort on that? Really going out, just continually working on updating services, I guess, for sewer services. That's a continuing on project. Obviously, that funding is available, so it's pretty good yet at that, so.
Do we have some of those projects going on now again, Joel, after we're back into that season?
Yeah, we've been doing some, we did some cammering this with the open winter and stuff like this. Kind of worked out nice to be able to do some cammering and stuff, you know, back through the snow and things like that, so. So we got, I don't know, we probably got, Deb, what do you say, fifteen, twenty maybe, right away up, that started here?
Yep.
Then we targeted another area, still waiting on some, the homeowners to get ahold of, somebody to get the cammering done, whatever, so. Move that proper forward, but.
We did have a couple of emergency ones.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll have some, we will have to reapply again here in July for funding. We haven't used up the funding that we have, so I'm not sure, it's kind of a new territory for us on this. I don't know how that all goes, if that funding goes away and start over with a new one, or how that all works, I guess. And I think it's kind of new to them too as well. But anyway, we'll be reapplying here shortly, so.
We certainly want to continue that if possible, if that funding's available. What percentage rate are we at right now, Joel?
Well, we were at zero, but it is going to change, one and a half percent, I believe, is what.
We're still at zero?
Yeah, currently, because of the funding that we currently have.
Right, so then after July one?
If we get funding.
If we get funding, it will be at one point five percent, so.
Yep.
So this is the last window of opportunity to get down to that zero percent.
Right, and I think, I guess, maybe the best to point out is, we have to be back at one point five percent. That doesn't necessarily mean that, can the council make a decision on that, whether they have to stick with that, or follow through at zero percent for me more?
That's what we have to look into.
Yeah, so.
Okay, alright.
So that'll be a discussion afterwards after we get the funding, hearing if we get the funding, so.
We'll probably learn that one as we go through that process. We have to be, we have to apply for it for it to like.
Yeah. Other than that, just got a couple of small little projects going to happen here this week. Doing some water line works down by Matt's Auto Glass, but you'll call again. Had some issues there, and some old, there's an old water being that ran in that alleyway. It's not being used, that we're going to get rid of, and you get two property owners that are on that main out to the front like they should be, so. But, yeah, other than that, I really don't have a whole lot. If you guys got some questions on the report.
Sump pumps, Joel.
Yep.
It's that time of year, why don't you make an announcement on sump pumps?
Yep.
I actually heard mine going for the first time just a couple of days ago.
So, yeah, as of April first, sump pumps are supposed to be outside, per the city code. Residents, businesses, you know, if you have them, get them switched out to the outside. Helps the city's sewer system flow, has to go and have to treat clean water that doesn't need to be treated as bonds, so. Which ends up costing the city slash taxpayer money, we have to, so. Can definitely help us out with that.
Good way to explain that, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. And then the only other thing I really need to point out is just, we will start in our spring slash summer jetting maintenance program again. We do it every year. This area we're targeting will be Area Four, which is basically from Third Avenue southeast to to the fairgrounds, and then also from Seventh Street southeast, north to Second Street northeast. And then everything else, as well. So it's a pretty good sized area, but that'll be the area that we will be working in, so. So if they, people hear some things happening, toilets gurgle and things like that, that's just some normal things that happen when we do our maintenance stuff, so. Not uncommon to have that happen, so. But probably will notify, put something on the paper at some point when we get started, or cable access or something, just to kind of get it out there, so, as well, but. Other than that, I don't have really a whole lot of anything else. Have you guys got something?
Good. Any questions from the council? No. Alright, well, thank you, Joel.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Building and zoning.
Good evening, everyone. With, well, with signing commission, we've been working on redoing the sign ordinance, and we're going on, I don't know, two months now. Hopefully, this time around, we'll have a work toward the final draft. And then maybe next month, we can get a recommendation to the council on the change for that. Board of Appeals have been doing variances, a lot of variances with signs, so that was the reason for the change, or changing up the the sign ordinance. Then on the building side, we've had, since the start of the new year, had three commercial permits valuing estimated value at eight hundred and seventy-one thousand. Residential, we've had twenty-five permits valuing around five hundred and ninety-five thousand. One demo permit, or no, two demo permits, no moving permits. Sign permit, there was one, and variants and COPs, I combined those together, but that was fourteen hundred dollars. Surcharge, that state surcharge is eight thousand nine hundred. And as well, been working on creating, creating and updating the current handouts for residents, you know, whether it's they're redoing a deck, they got information, some code charts, building code charts. Code regulations, you know, it makes it easier to where it shortens our conversation when they come in and get a permit. Or if I'm not there, they'll be able to obtain those handouts. Looking to add some of that information onto the website, try to continue educating the public with some building codes. That's all I got. Unless you guys have some specific questions or?
Any questions from the council? It's good to hear that the permits are coming out already. You have twenty-five construction permits, and, yeah, that season's started, so.
Yeah.
Alright, well, thank you, Solomon. Next up is liquor store.
Good evening, everybody. Our, the month of March, our sales were down, as of the quarter, our sales were down. But our average per customer was also down, so people are spending less money on booze and more on the pigs, apparently. I really don't have anything else to say about that report. I did get, last Friday, the state auditor finally came out with their report on liquor store sales from two thousand and twenty-three. Normally, that report comes out in November or December of the following year, so this is twenty-three, it should have came out in twenty-four, but it didn't come out until last Friday. And on that report, what they do is they go through all the liquor stores, all the municipal liquor stores in the state of Minnesota, and they audit all of them. There's a hundred and seventy-six municipal liquor stores in the state of Minnesota. We ranked sixty-fourth gross sale for that year. They break it down into, just, I don't quite understand how this one works, but they rank it by net profit or loss as a percentage of sales, and in the whole state of Minnesota, we ranked seventeen. And that category, and in that same category, they break that down in regions also, and for the southwest region, we ranked number two behind Marshall. So apparently, that's pretty good. Our gross sales for the first quarter of the year were four hundred and seven thousand, four hundred and four dollars and ninety-four cents, and our gross margins were a hundred and eleven thousand, ninety-nine dollars and forty-four cents. And our THC sales, we have so far this, through the first quarter, it sold just under twelve thousand dollars worth of THC products.
Okay.
Any questions?
Any questions from the council? And of course, we all know that the net profits help fund local projects here too in Pipestone, so. Thank you very much. Yeah.
Thank you.
Recreation.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
In your bag at, there are going on right now, right now, summer programs, registration started yesterday at six P M on Civic Rec. There are also these surveys available for each program, grandparents can fill out there as well. So that's, that's going pretty well, pretty fast, so. Family White Center, Black Guard, we're advertising out there for Guard, we're still looking for a few more, and that train would place, take place May thirty-first and June first by MB, E M B D of Sioux Falls, they're coming here, and extended open date of third for the pool. And also, we're having the EMS, is going to do a PFAC training in June fifth in the morning, so that's nice. Rec Center, summer employees, about ninety percent complete, getting everybody hired. Our summer hours started today, which is five thirty A M to seven P M, Monday through Friday, Saturdays, nine to one, and Sundays, we're closed. With the help of Deb and our lawyer, Jason, correct?
Yep.
And then through the board, the board asked about having a situation where, if you're a member, and you're between fourteen and seventeen, you can access the upstairs. But if that parent or guardian is with them, could they come in when we're not staffed, as long as the parent and guardian was with them? So came up with a waiver that's acceptable, and we'll be starting that real soon. So if you have twenty-four-seven access as a parent, you can bring in, and a member, you can bring in your child fourteen to seventeen, from like five A M to five thirty until we open, or from like tonight, from seven to ten P M. And we restrict it from five A M to ten P M, and they have to be out of the building. The parent can stay in there, but the young, the teenagers would have to be gone by then. So did I explain that good enough? Maybe not. Let's just say, let's say if I have a child that's fourteen years old, and I'm a twenty-four-seven member, okay, I want to work out at seven thirty at night tonight. I can have them come with me as long as they sign the waiver, and they can be with me until, up till ten P M, and then they have to leave the building.
Who's signing the waiver? The parent is, correct?
And the child, yes.
Oh, the child signing it also?
Yes. I do have a sample of the one.
Just so they know who the child is.
The child?
Basically, yeah, that's just to identify who.
Identify who the child is, yeah.
The parent, guardian, printed names, signature, stuff like that, so.
Yeah.
And it's been cleared with legal wise, so I think that's, the board, some of the board members brought it up, they're bringing that up and to take a look at that.
I think it's a great idea. You want to go work out with your teenage son or something, or daughter, and what's wrong with that?
A lot of the facilities we reached out to, it does have a timeline of ten P M on, you know, one over midnight, and I don't think they need to be up there at midnight anyway, but.
Yeah.
That's one thing, and then we've received some grants, so, one through, I think you approved them earlier, but thirteen, one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars from the Pipestone Area Community Foundation for swim lessons, and then from United Way, we've received two thousand dollars for the after-school summertime fun program, and two thousand for rec programs. And for the twin strip, we're still getting our sponsor money in for that. And we also did receive, just the other day, a seven hundred dollar donation check from the J C's to fund some stuff for this year, so that's nice. That has not been, I just brought this up today, so. But people are really willing to give in this town towards the rec department, after-school and summertime fun programs.
We're fortunate there.
Pete already has parents that work out at night and would like to bring their kids with.
They've requested that, and so we, it's a want slash need maybe, but I think, you know, by them signing the waiver with the child, they're liable for anything that would happen and stuff like that.
Good.
Okay.
Any other questions from the council, or Pete? No, well, thank you, Pete. Okay, library, Jody.
Alright, thank you for having me here tonight. I would like to start by saying thank you for your support for the library. I just finished filling out and sending in our state report. It's an annual report that we have to send to State Library Services. What it does is it helps our elected officials, our stakeholders, it helps everybody see the impact that libraries have on communities, how many people are using it, what kinds of funds go into it. And just, I just want to run a quick little fact for you based on that. So, not sure if you're aware, but on March fourteenth, the White House Administration ceased funding the Institute of Museum and Library Services, and that does actually impact us. And so I have information here, if you have any questions about what that looks like. But your return on investment, so for every dollar that you provide to us at the library, is a five dollar return on investment. So between you and the county last year, we had two hundred and twenty-three thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight dollars invested by our city and our county into our library. So when you multiply that by the five dollars for your return on investment, our community is well over a million dollars of services and value that our library provides to our community, so thank you very much for that. And because of you and your support, we are able to do a lot of programs for our community. We are just finishing up, well, we're kind of halfway through our homegrown series. We had thirty-two people at Plant Bingo, who knew it was so popular, I didn't, but everybody's asking if we'll do it again. We built book nooks yesterday, and we are having, we have one more program, and I can't find it right here, oh, we're doing Faceplanters. So that was part of a series that we received a grant for, a thousand dollars from the Prairielands Library Exchange, which does receive some of its funding from the federal government, so that trickle-down effect. So we're hoping to take advantage of all of those great things. Today, we had seventeen people in our library getting their faces drawn. We had a caricaturist that came in and did that for National Library Week, that is this week, it is drawn to the library, and so we thought it'd be fun to actually draw people in the library. But anytime you visit the library this week, you are able to put your name in a drawing, a prize. We will be drawing on Friday, so every time you come in, you can put your name in there, and that is thanks to our Pipestone Area Friends of the Library, those are where those prizes are coming from. And we did just receive, just found out that we received a thirty-five hundred dollar grant for a legacy grant series. Community connections through artistic expression. So this summer, we're going to do a really robust, it's almost thirteen, it's thirteen to fifteen programs total, that we'll have musicians and artists, authors, photography, we'll just have all sorts of different ways you can express yourself, so people can see what that's like, and dip their toes into those kinds of waters. And so I would say, stay tuned for those programs and more. Our summer reading will be starting here at the beginning of June. And you can find us on our Facebook or on minderslibrary.com, so if you have any questions.
Any questions for Jody, the library? Okay, well, thank you, Jody. And I'd just like to point out that, you know, we should be very proud of our department heads that we have here. We just had a small group of department heads come in, and I'm sure they have other things they'd like to be doing in the evening, but to come forward to a council meeting, and they give us just a fraction of what they're actually doing on a daily basis. And we have some long-term department heads that have been doing some great job and providing a great service to the City of Pipestone for quite some time, so. Thank you to everyone there in the city, thank you. Okay, let's move on to old business. Safer routes to school project update, and Travis, you'll give us an update on that twenty twenty-five project.
Yeah, Minnesota, end of, before you hear the, take a look at, we're going to talk through. We've completed design, plans are being reviewed by the state for compliance with stated guidelines. So just wanted to talk through the route selection that we went, that we did for this job. This is a five-foot sidewalk that goes from on Fourth Street northwest, from Hiawatha, from Hiawatha to Eighth Avenue, and then Eighth Avenue around Second Street up to Hundred and Twenty-First Street. So we tried to minimize the amount of times that there's, there's pedestrian traffic crossing the road, that was one of our guidelines that we were working with then. Starting out at Hiawatha, we picked the north side of the road because the second block west of Hiawatha is that Cell Energy Substation. As you continue west, we chose to switch to the south side at Fourth Avenue because as the street goes west, from Fourth Avenue to Eighth Avenue, it's a rural section on the north side, so there's no curb and gutter. And then the drainage sheds to the north into the ditch, and farm field drains away, and essentially, we would have had to add curb and gutter along there to have a barrier between the traffic and and the pedestrians. And then as well, with those, especially in that farm field area, as you approach the development going west, we would, if we had a boulevard, there a grass boulevard, we'd have been outside of the right-of-way. So we would have either had to push the sidewalk up, take behind the curb. That was an extra expense, or get an easement. Those two factors are the reason we felt that the south side was a better option. So we did continue that on the south side all the way west to Eighth Avenue. The first three blocks of Eighth Avenue, starting at Second, are on the west side. There's multiple residential properties on that side of the street. And then as well, the kids and care, there's a parking lot on the north side of the building. It was kind of a concern about having a sidewalk on that side, traffic knocking in and out, is what we were trying to avoid. At Fifth Street then, it lined up with the existing sidewalk on Fifth Street to go back across Eighth Avenue, or to go across Eighth Avenue, and just continue on the, that side of the street, all the way up to Hundred and Twenty-First, to the connection up there with the existing trail.
Okay, I've got a quick question here. On Eighth Avenue, as you come up from Eighth Street to Fifth Street, and then you're crossing over to the west side of Eighth Avenue. What was the point to cross over at that, and why not at Fourth Street? Continue on the east side to Fourth Street?
Main reason was the residential properties, we're picking those up on the west side there.
But there's residential on the east side also?
There are, the ones along Fifth Street, front out on the Fifth Street.
Right. And then, you know, you could tie that in.
Yeah.
Yeah. It seems a more open area there for sure. And then I really got a problem with Fourth Street, east and west, and moving that sidewalk to the south side at Fourth Avenue. That just does not make much sense to me. I know we've got high-line wires there on the south side. We've got a state highway department shop, a county highway department. Uh, we've got a State Highway Department shop, a County Highway Department shop, recycling shed. It it it's all uh commercial. There it's, there's nothing residential there at all. And yet, on the other side, on the north side, that's all residential. And and we're supposed to be doing a safe route to schools and then we're directing kids in front of uh where there's heavy equipment uh moving in and out of there all the time. So I don't know if it takes getting an an easement, um, what that process would be. But to me, it seems from Fourth Avenue to Eighth Avenue, we should remain on the north side of uh Fourth Street uh for safety for the children.
Didn't you say, Travis, you'd have to add a curb and gutter if you did that?
Yeah, there'd be, we'd have to.
Could you pull it, put in like a rolled um gutter? And and it probably would make sense to uh put in like a rolled curb or something along that area anyway because, yeah, you have a blacktop and uh there's no curb and gutter there at all. And and so um, there's nothing protecting um that roadway from the water. It can get under it quite easily. So it would make sense to probably upgrade that to uh some type of curb and gutter anyway. And and with this project like this and and as a grant, I mean, this would be a time to do something like that. Because we we have a nice apartment complex there. We have some uh um condominiums there and we also have another apartment complex there and an open area where there's possible development. And and so uh, to me, a sidewalk is more than just a place where people go and walk to point A to point B. The sidewalk is where parents say, you know, let the kids go out and play, but don't go past the sidewalk. It's a barrier. It's a place where kids learn how to ride their bikes. It's a place where kids um learn how to, you know, play games and things like that. And and so I think it's important to have that sidewalk on the residential side, the north side, than it is on the south side, the commercial side. I'd like to see what it would take to be able to do that.
Yeah, we, I, we, we could definitely run that through farther. Um, they say there is extra cost to the curb to adding that. And then um, I think at this point, to be able to construct the project this year, we wouldn't be able to to pursue the easement option. We would need to just put the sidewalk up behind the curb and um and try to, try to get that to fit that way.
Well, I think it would flow better too with uh the potential for additional um, you know, walkways. And part of this is to connect with the county's um trail system to come around the Playmore Curve area there on Eighth Avenue and come up. And we're also gonna be doing additional uh walkways and trails at uh, you know, Hiawatha Park area eventually. And to tie all that in with more park, uh, yeah, it would make sense to be on that north side all the way across for long-term and for the safety, I think. I'm seeing a few heads nod, but.
But I mean, I do agree with the point of with the Highway Department there. I mean, that, that is an issue. There's a lot of equipment going in and out there all the time.
Well, then I see the intersection of Fourth Street and Eighth Avenue there. You have a lot of traffic turning off Eighth Avenue. I mean, I think more from the north or northbound traffic turning onto Fourth Street, which if you had the sidewalk on the other side may.
Wouldn't have an issue.
Be a little safer crossing than what, and then uh, um, that uh, wouldn't have to do, put up with the, with the traffic that's northbound and turn onto Fifth Street or, I mean, on the Fourth Street. And so, and I don't know about, actually, I know you could, when you get up to kids, the daycare there, that you wouldn't be able to go on that side because there's not enough room there.
Well, you'd have to adjust that uh parking um to parallel parking. But uh, it would make sense probably to have that sidewalk along the kids and care side on the east side and bring them across Second Street and then continue with a sidewalk on the east side to that uh crossing area on Eighth Avenue further on down. It 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 just, it would be so much simpler if we didn't have those two breaks at Fifth Street where we break over to the west side and at Fourth Avenue where we break over to the uh south side. Just keep it all on the east side on Eighth Avenue, keep it all on the north side on Fourth Street.
And then at certain times of the day, I mean, after the buses come back in there, by the load-offs there, there would be an issue with the sidewalk on that side with the, I mean.
Yeah.
During school hours, I mean, when they're leaving, probably the morning's not an issue and when they leave at night's not an issue. But when they come back in after the routes, could be an issue for the kids on the sidewalk there also.
If you, if you move that over to the east side of the road there, Travis, is there more right-of-way to work with there? Because on the other side, you had, you proposed to put it right behind the curb.
South two blocks right behind the curb because of some of those same grading issues that we had along Eighth Avenue. The ground falls to the west. Um, there's storm sewer, they would have to be extended. It's uh, none of this is ideal. We're retrofitting a sidewalk in. You had to move that sidewalk to the east side. Uh, we would have to close that parking area at Kids and Care. And that's where all the staff park. Because they're, I mean, they're, the cars literally hang.
Room for them, you know. But without that, there's nothing and they need the parking on the street for the pickup and drop-off on the front of the building.
And you are gonna run across the the back entry into the Highway Department again. If you put it on the east side, then you're gonna be running right across that again.
Mm-hmm.
We did have a meeting with the county on that too. And they were kind of leaning towards having it on the west side for for those reasons and and for snow removal as well.
And they did acknowledge the the grading challenges that were present along Fourth Street and did, did not have a concern with.
Well, I see that point because there's, there's quite a drop-off there is there on the north side of Fourth Street. Yeah, I see that point too.
But it it's not that it's impossible to do.
We would have to have the curb right behind the, or we'd have to add curb, which is another expense that wasn't included in the budget previously. And then we would, we would have to suck it up behind the curb, which is a maintenance concern when the winter was snow, but, you know.
There, there's no room there for a boulevard. That, you know, that, those uh buildings are set back quite a ways from the roadway. And to me, it looks like there's plenty of room there for a boulevard.
It drops off so fast.
Yeah, it's about, it keeps sloping down. So to put a sidewalk in that's flat, you'd have to chase the slope outside of, either outside of the right-of-way or it would be steeper, be a steeper slope.
Yeah, I, you know, and to chase that slope outside of the right-of-way would require an easement, is that what you're saying?
Yep.
And and to me, that's not a bad thing because there is plenty of room there to do that. And uh, it would certainly make it a lot safer. I I'm just uh a hundred percent against uh putting in a safe route to school sidewalk in front of uh the State Highway Department and the uh County Highway Shop when there's another place for it on the north side where it's residential.
If you put it on the south side like you have it here, what kind of a crosswalk are you gonna have to cross Fourth Street?
Right now, it was just planned to be a straight crosswalk. Eventually, or, you know, at some point, um, the flashing beacons could, could be added there if there was.
Because, I mean, there is, when traffic flows through there, it flows.
Yeah.
Let's just put it that way.
Well, it's kinda starting to get out of town there and they're starting to.
Right.
It goes, it's thirty, but that doesn't always.
Now, on the south side, you also have all the high-line poles that they just put in. That's all new, that's a, that's a main uh line that was all just put in where the north side is open.
Yeah, it's just a matter of acquiring easements and that.
I, I wonder, well, could you, you know, just go back to the drawing board and come up with uh what exactly um it would take to be able to do what we're talking about and and what that cost would be? And and then we could make a decision, you know, we have some time yet to to do that. But uh, it's a great grant that we have, Safe Route to School, and uh we certainly uh wanna do it the best we can because, you know, we're retrofitting a sidewalk in there, right? But uh, you only do that once. They wanna give it the right way.
Yeah, and I guess cost-wise, I mean, obviously, we're still just estimating it. We haven't, haven't bid it yet. Um, but we are right at what the requested amount was. So if the costs go over that, then the city's responsible for picking up the extra, extra charges. So just, just wanna make that known where we're, we are very close. I wish we had more wiggle room in there, but as we've always seen, costs go up every year and.
The project does need to be done this year.
You shorten up the project between uh Eighth Avenue and uh Hundred and Twenty-First Street and save some money there and put it in where the residential area is? Is there an option?
That would require MINDOT approval to change the scope of work from what the grant request was.
Because the use of that is gonna be limited to the people using the walking trail. Where the use of it, where I'm talking about on Fourth Street, is for the day-to-day activity of the kids that live there.
Yep, yep, we just, we, one of the selling points for this was the connectivity to the, to that other trail, especially with the uh, the uh sidewalks and Trailmaster Plan going in connection there.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'd like to see it, don't get me wrong.
Yep.
But when it comes time that, okay, we have this number of dollars and we need to trim somewhere, I would see, just just soon see a trim there versus uh doing it the cheap and quick fast way at Fourth Street. And then at a later date, maybe we could add that with some type of other funding. Okay, any other questions or comments on that? Well, thank you, Travis. New business, Resolution Twenty-Twenty-Five Twenty-Four. This is a resolution granting a conditional use permit for the placement of an accessory structure at Seven-Eleven Third Avenue Southwest in the City of Pipestone. The resolution is being brought forth as a recommendation from the Planning Commission and they held a public hearing on March twelfth and approved the uh recommended approval of the application and allowing a twelve-foot by twenty-four-foot structure um placed on that property. And uh, right now, let's see, the conditional use is for an existing five-foot by eight-foot uh structure uh to be removed also. So that was part of the uh recommendation from the Planning Commission. So I'd entertain a motion uh to approve Resolution Twenty-Twenty-Five Twenty-Four.
So I'm moving, I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and motion carries. Resolution Twenty-Twenty-Five Twenty-Five. This is a resolution adopting an amendment to Administrative Policy Number Twenty-Five, Public Purpose Expenditures. And the city administrator, uh Deb Nelson, and city attorney Jason Hill are are available here to explain any questions pertaining to this resolution. So Deb, if you wanna give a, just a brief rundown on uh this resolution?
Sure. Uh, Robert Peterson, there's a softball card that um, Robert, uh, to get more um, more people at the Rec Center of the Pool has offered a buy-one-get-one-free admission at the Rec Center and the Pool as a, a way to bring in more people to the, the pool and the Rec Center, they said. And to do that, we have to, to be able to honor those cards, we'll have to just amend the policy. It's a temporary um amendment to the public expenditure policy for a discount on park uh on that, the admission, and this resolution would take care of that through December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-five. Pete is here, he can, if you have any questions on the card, it's on the softball card, uh, the Pipestone Area Softball Parents. It's a fundraiser for the softball, it's the parents, correct, Pete?
Yeah.
That, yeah, the parents put on this softball card and you get discounts from just different places in Pipestone, eating facilities, and Pete did for the Rec Center and the aquatic facility. And then there's other eating places in Marshall and um Sioux Falls as well. And this just uh cleans up the, the buy-one-and-get-one-free admission for just the year. It's just a temporary, just a temporary fix.
It's a great idea you had, Pete.
Yep.
And it's a great fundraiser for the uh school district. And this is just kind of a housekeeping thing so that we can do this uh properly. So I'd entertain a motion to approve Resolution Twenty-Twenty-Five, Act Twenty-Five.
I so move.
So move?
I'll second it.
And seconded. Any other questions, comments, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say no, motion carries. Next up is Consider the Aquatic Center Operational Audit Agreement. And this was uh discussed in our annual planning session where we'd like to see uh um the upgrading, the cost to the uh Pipestone family aquatic facility that's coming up on thirty years plus old. And so uh, there are some needs there. And the company councilman, Hans Sacker, um, has given us a quote of nine thousand dollars to uh perform this uh aquatic center maintenance and potential upgrades uh audit. Uh, we estimated that it would cost probably about closer to fourteen thousand, so it did come in quite a bit less than what we had estimated. But um, again, it's a starting point and uh we're not advocating, we're, we're gonna be changing anything right now. But uh, we need to be looking at the future too in, in the age of that structure and what it needs in the future, so. I'd entertain a motion to approve the uh operational audit agreement.
So move. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and motion carries. Declaration of Surplus Property. And again, uh, uh, Robert has a uh request here for the Harmon Park Tennis Court panels. And those were the uh panels that were taken up from the tennis court when they put in the new pickleball court system. They're very good panels, it's a nice structure there. Hopefully, there's some use there um for another municipality. And uh, um, we can't get rid of them until we declare them as surplus property, so we need to do that at this point. So that's what this uh would be. I'd entertain a motion to uh declare that as surplus property so it can be disposed of properly.
So move.
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and motion carries. Thank you. Uh, approve the vendor for serving alcohol at the Hiawatha Lodge. And that would be uh, Payette DeRyke at Bowmore Lanes for May eighth, twenty-twenty-five and June twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five. So I'd entertain a motion to approve that vendor.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any questions or comments? And would she be providing food then too that's part of it? Uh, no, okay, all right, okay, all right. So all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and motion carries. Approve the Public Works Cold Storage Building Project. And this is something, again, that we had talked about at our annual planning session February first. And uh, we have a quote proposed for a sixty-foot by a hundred and twenty-foot cold storage shed located at the Public Works Department directly north of the historical concrete um water tower. And uh Deb, you have further information on that, so I'll allow you to uh um explain that to the council.
Okay, so Mike had um, as we're mandated to do, uh, had to go get two quotes. And um unfortunately, with um Pipestone Building Materials, they are the only game in town for the materials. He had to go outside city, up to sit, outside city limits to get quotes. And in reviewing the quotes, there was just some discrepancy noticed in the, of the quotes. Just, this was just on the lumber supplies on the materials.
Just, this was just on the lumber supplies on the materials. And so, um, and looking at him, he is, we, he's gone through and went through all the, the quotes, the electrical and the contractor and the materials. And, um, just because of some of the discrepancies he noticed in the, the material quotes and to keep, he'd like to keep the business local, he would, is recommending that we go with, um, Pipestone Bear, Building Material Quote in the amount of, quote is seventy-four thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars and six cents. Um, and the electrical quote would go to, Corey Potma, Jers Electric, fourteen thousand, five hundred and fifty, he was a low quote. And then the quote for, oh, excuse me, sorry, Jers Electric, Corey's was eleven thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars. Sorry, sorry about that. And then the low quote for the contractor was, um, bolster construction and remodeling for thirty-two thousand, four hundred dollars for a total of approximately a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. And that would be at the, like we said, the Public Workshop. He will follow through with all the, uh, plan review to Solomon, the billing permit. Uh, the funds would come out of the three different departments, the cemetery fund, the street department and the garbage fund. Um, forty-six thousand, six hundred dollars would come out of each one. Built a little contingency in there just in case of what the, if there was any, um, anything went over a little bit.
This is significantly below the cost that they originally-
Exactly, yeah, yeah. It comes to approximately a hun, just, just under a hundred and twenty, excuse me, just under a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So therefore, we didn't have to go through the competitive bidding process. He just had to get the two quotes, which he did for each one. And so he's just looking for the approval for the sixty-by-a-hundred-and-twenty-foot pool, whole, uh, shed-type building, um, in the location at the old, at the same, uh, property he owns. And they would be the east side of the old water department building.
Okay, so there's some small trees there that would have to be removed. Is there a way to salvage those trees?
I'm not-
They were planted not long ago.
I don't think Travis and we met the other, on Friday, I don't believe there was any trees had to be removed.
It wasn't discussed, no.
No, I don't believe that there was.
If there was, you know, they can-
Yeah, there's like six, seven little trees that were just planted there. Yeah, okay. Well, I, I'm, uh, I know our world has changed a great deal since February first, when we first talked about this. And, uh, in fact, just in the last few days, um, there's been quite a few changes and a lot of uncertainty out there, and, uh, that worries me. And, and this is something that we can do without borrowing money. We have that money available, but is it something that we need to do today? Is it something that we need to do this week? Is it something we need to do this year? With all the uncertainty, I think we have to be prepared to absorb some of that. And, uh, we don't want to be depleting funds at this point. Um, I don't know what our LGA funds will be for twenty-six and twenty-seven. The state legislature doesn't even know at this time. And we need to have that information by the first of July, the fiscal year. A- and so, when will we, um, know that type of information? And I just do not feel confident, um, spending this type of money at this time. It, it just makes me a little nervous, and I think we need to, uh, um, slow down a little bit and see how things play out in the next few months.
Well, I will say, Dan, Dan, if, if I may-
Yeah.
He's losing storage and he doesn't need this cold storage.
Correct, I, I know-
He did at the airport, and that's where he kept a lot of his heavy equipment.
Right.
Was at that airport, um, that, uh, airport hangar, which he lost. And so that was the purpose of building this new place. He had, has nowhere to put this stuff except outside.
Right.
So that was the purpose of doing this, and he's ready to build it now.
Yeah, there's lots of equipment sitting out there today.
Yeah. And, and, and so is that equipment that can't be stored outside? Is that what you're saying?
It would be better if it was inside.
Well, of course, everything is better inside, that's for sure, but-
It would be better protected.
I, I am just concerned about, uh, spending down our reserves at this point. And, uh, I am not in favor of spending down those reserves, knowing what, uh, we know right now. In a few months, I might have a different opinion, but I don't know enough at this point. I, I know that, uh, um, Iowa Legislature has already informed their, uh, local governments that there will be cuts. And, uh, we've, um, have been so accustomed to the LGA funds, and we've had some very good LGA funds come through, um, for the City of Pipestone. But if that stops, we're gonna be in a world of hurt. And, uh, we don't know where we're at right now. We do know that the federal government is cutting back. And, uh, Jody had a very good comment with the library, that's just one area. What's next? And our federal government is actually telling us that it will get worse before it gets better. And so we, we might be going through some tough times here in the very near future that we have to be prepared for.
Only thing you gotta consider is how much, uh, damage it does to the equipment that sits outside. You're talking tires and-
Yep.
You know, any of the equipment, you know what it's like, if it sits outside, it gets damaged from the sun.
Yeah, the replacement costs on them are only going up too.
Yeah, and a hundred and twelve thousand dollars is not very much when you consider the value of the equipment that's sitting out there.
A- and it might take some, uh, thinking outside the box and maybe some rearranging and, uh, moving some of what's in storage right now into different areas and, uh, putting some of that valuable equipment behind, uh, in buildings that we currently have. But, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm leaning towards, uh, pushing the pause button right now until, uh, we know more. That, that's my feelings on it.
Well, I've just permit, presented the information to you, that's your decision.
Yeah.
How, how long is this quote for?
Um, it's, he's had him for a while, so-
Yeah, but is there a time limit on the quotes?
I would have to ask him.
There would be, that's what I'm thinking.
They're good for fifteen days, and he got this on the eighteenth of March.
I firmly believe that they didn't need this, they didn't need the space to put the equipment in. They surely wouldn't be building the building to put it in. Because they do have a garbage truck that'll be coming in this year also.
That comes in in August.
Pick up space.
That can't sit all the cold.
I'll make a motion to approve the building project.
I'll second it.
And we have motion on four, is there any other discussion or comments? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, and if, when opposed, say no. No, and motion carries. G, Fire Chief Appointment. The Fire Department members have voted to appoint Michael Blumenthal as the city's fire chief. Appointment of the fire chief is done on an annual basis and the council approval is needed. So I'd entertain a motion to approve, uh, Michael Blumenthal as our fire chief.
So move, second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and motion carries. Approve the Housing and Redevelopment Authority Commission Member Resignation. And Mitch Reynolds has resigned from that, uh, commission effective April first. So I'd entertain a motion to approve his resignation.
So move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any questions, comments? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and motion carries. Next up, uh, we received a letter of resignation from, uh, our, uh, accounting clerk and administrative assistant. And that was effective April eleventh, twenty-five, twenty-five. So I'd entertain a motion to, uh, accept that resignation.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and motion carries. Uh, brings us to closing comments, and, uh, one of the things I wanted to comment on was the Board of Appeals Meeting, um, and adjustments. That would be at seven PM tomorrow here in the council chamber. So, uh, put that on your calendar if it's something you want to come in and discuss. That is your time to do that. And that would be on your assessed value of your property. Any other closing comments?
I do.
Go ahead.
Yeah, thank Ashley for her service, for, for working here, you know, the six months or whatever she worked here. And thank Mitch Reynolds for serving on, uh, the HRA board for the years that he served.
He has also National Severe Weather Awareness Week, so keep an eye out for sirens potentially going off this week to test.
Okay.
Good thought processes there.
Yeah.
Tomorrow, uh, community blood drive.
Community blood drive right here in town?
Yep.
Oh, is that held at, uh?
At the hospital.
At the hospital, okay, alright, good, alright.
I believe they get a fifteen-dollar quick trip card for donating blood to moms.
No kidding, that's a good deal. Get a car washed for nothing.
They have enough money left for a pop.
Yeah. Alright, any other closing comments? Alright, hearing none, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.